Welcome to the Town of Avon Advisory Plan Commission meeting. If you are interested in having a copy of the agenda, they are available on the tables to the right of the audience. We will be conducting business as outlined on the agenda. From time to time, the Board may deviate from the agenda. As President of this body, I will inform those in attendance of any deviations. This meeting is being recorded for the public record. Because of this, we request that personal conversations are kept to a minimum and that all cell phones are set to vibrate. Any phone calls must be taken outside of the chambers. If you are interested in commenting during the public hearing portion of the Commission's deliberations, please sign up on the sheets located on the tables to the right of the audience. When your name is called, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Please address your comments to the Board and not to the staff or to the petitioner. Your comments should relate directly to the case at hand. During the conduct of the public hearing portion of the Commission's deliberations, the petitioner will have 10 minutes to present their case to the Commission. Remonstrators will have 10 minutes to present objections to the petition. Persons in support of the petition other than the petitioner will have 10 minutes to present support for the petition. Finally, the petitioner will close the public hearing portion of the presentation with a five-minute rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed, no additional testimony will be heard unless it is solicited by members of the Commission during the question and answer phase of the Commission's deliberations. Subdivision, plat, and development plan petitions are ministerial requests, meaning that if the proposal meets the requirements set forth in the town's development ordinances, the Plan Commission must approve the request, and that's what we have here tonight. In the interest of transparency, state law requires that the Plan Commission hold a public hearing even if the development approval must be approved. Responses to public comments and questions may be given once the public hearing portion is closed. We understand that there may be several persons who wish to speak. In order to keep the meeting running in a timely fashion, we would request that you not repeat previous comments. Thank you for your assistance in facilitating a respectful, fair, and timely meeting. Again, welcome to our meeting. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's get started. Shall we do a call to order?
Captain Andrew.
Here.
Logan, bird.
Here.
Hillary.
Here.
Robert, boat.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Nathan Pike.
Here.
Frank Zinn.
Pass.
Do we have a quorum?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the October 24th, 22 minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to read the minutes, have any suggested additions, edits, subtractions, spelling errors? No? Do you have a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
I move to approve the October 24th, 22 Plan Commission regular meeting minutes as presented.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, we are moving on to the public comment section, the public comment portion for items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you would like to speak about anything that is not on tonight's agenda, now would be the time to come forward. Is there anybody, we'd like to open the public comment hearing at 6:35. Anybody wanting to speak on anything that's not on the agenda?
Mr. Osborne, he has been representing these numbers here.
Okay, Mr. Osborne?
Thorman, today.
Oh, okay. Okay, then if nobody wishes to speak about anything not on tonight's agenda, public hearing for that shall be closed. Requests for continuances or agenda modifications. Looks like we have two?
We have three now.
Okay.
The first one is DPR 2207, which is Avon Retail Center. This is a request for approval of development plan review petition to construct a new 16,650 square foot retail center in the Beechwood Retail Center. The, as the Commission is aware, this petition has been continued a couple times so that some real estate activities could occur at the shopping center. Those, in fact, the Commission heard a subdivision request last month on this that separated out this retail center, allowing the petitioner to construct an addition to an existing building rather than construct a freestanding building. They need more time for design of that building and are requesting a continuance to the February 27th, 2023 hearing date. To do that, the Plan Commission does have to waive a rule in their rules of procedure. Section 5-4 sets a limit to continuances being six months beyond the originally scheduled hearing date. And this petition would have hit that six-month period on the December hearing. So the Plan Commission to continue it would have to waive that rule of procedure and then continue it to the February 27th, 2023 hearing date. Staff has no objection to that. Generally speaking, the intent of this rule is to stop people from doing serial continuances in hopes of diluting remonstrance to a petition. And in this particular case, it's totally different. In this particular case, they started out with a freestanding building and now they want to do an addition on to an existing building, which means they have to redesign, submit it, go through the tack meeting and everything like that. Mr. Dear is here. He is the petitioner if you have any questions about the case and why they need it, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
And this was first heard in June?
Yeah, it would have been, it would have been first heard in June.
Okay.
It was continued to June, I think, August, and then August to this meeting.
Okay. Would you like to speak?
Bill pretty much summarized everything correctly.
If you could, name address, please, sorry.
I'm sorry, Michael Dear, 1076143. The petitioner or the architect has started work on the new building, so we are starting to move forward again. The real estate transaction is not quite finalized, but it's almost finalized.
Okay.
So we're ready to move again.
Any questions or comments? Do we have a, and you feel like there's, you're moving along at good speed?
Yes, I'll be able to submit in time for the 27th of February.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Sure. I move that DPR 2207 Avon Retail Center that we continue this to the February 27th, 2023 meeting.
Dan, we need to ask for a waiver of the rule first, is that correct?
No, it just takes an affirmative vote. You'll be waiving probably.
Okay. Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Let's take a vote.
Captain Andrew.
Four.
Paul, you murdered?
Four.
Hillary.
Four.
Barbara, boat.
Four.
Dave, Calvin.
Four.
Nathan Pike.
Four.
Second item that is being requested for continues is Mat P 2214. This is the Manor at Avon Primary Plat. It's on your agenda under Old Business. The petitioner submitted some revised drainage calculations on Monday of last week. Those were forwarded to our review consultant, and obviously with the holiday, the review consultant couldn't get the review completed. This one was continued at your last meeting because we had some concerns with the preliminary drainage plan, and our review consulting, reviewing engineering firm didn't feel comfortable forwarding it with a conditional approval because he was concerned that the drainage issues that he'd identified would materially affect the layout of the plat. Because he hasn't had the opportunity to review this particular petition, we're asking, the staff is asking for that to be continued one month to December 20th, 2022. He anticipates being able to get his review done this week, so there shouldn't be any problem with hearing that one on December 20th, 2022.
And this is for Countryside, correct?
This is for Manor at Avon.
Or Manor at Avon.
Yeah, the Manor at Avon. It's on, under Old Business.
Right.
On your agendas.
And the request is to have it continued to December 20th?
December 20th, yeah. I believe that our review consultant will be able to get the review done. Probably, like I said, probably this week he'll complete it, just wasn't able to get it done before the meeting.
Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue Major Plat 22-1 for the Manor at Avon Primary Plat until the December 20th, 2022 meeting.
I'll second.
Let's take a vote.
Captain Andrew.
Four.
Logan, murder.
Four.
Hillary.
Four.
Barbara, boat.
Four.
Dave, Calvin.
Four.
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 And then the final request is Mat P 2216, Countryside Estates Primary Plat. As the Commission is aware, this particular case has, was heard at the last meeting, the Commission denied the waiver requests that the petitioner had, and they're still in redesign on that one, trying to determine a second access point for the subdivision. A second access point on 100 North would require another waiver. An access point on the Dan Jones Road would require, wouldn't require a waiver, but they're just trying to, they haven't solidified their options for this one. So they have requested, the petitioner has requested that this one be continued one additional month to December 20th, 2022, so that they can continue design on this subdivision.
Questions for staff or comments? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion. I move that we continue MAPP 2216 Countryside Estates Primary Plat to the December 20th, 2022 meeting.
I'll second it.
Captain Andrew.
Four.
Logan, murder.
Four.
Hillary.
Four.
Barbara, boat.
Four.
Dave, Calvin.
Four.
Nathan Pike.
Four.
Okay. Let's move on to New Business. Mr. Peoples?
And for anybody in the audience that was in the audience for Countryside Estates or the Manor at Avon or the Avon Retail Center, we just wanted to make sure you understood that that won't be heard tonight, it'll be heard at a subsequent meeting. The first item on the agenda, what?
There's also incorrect.
Oh, I'll do it when I get to it. DPR 2220 Avon Dental Center Request for Approval of Development Plan Review to Build a Dental Office at 8107 Kingston Street. This had a little bit of history associated with it. The items on the, the most applicable for the review of this petition were ZA 2210, Avon Dental Center Rezoning, which the Plan Commission heard a couple months ago and the Town Council approved conditionally. And then SPRF 0113, which is Lot 16 in the Avon Commerce Park, and this was the construction of about a 24,000 square foot multi-tenant retail center immediately adjacent to the east of this particular piece of property. This is the general location of the property right here. It is improved with about 31 to 32 parking spaces and a lift station for a sanitary sewer facility on the property. The proposal would develop about a 4,600 square foot dental center on this lot in the Avon Commerce Park. It was recently rezoned to C2. It was rezoned to C2 to construct this, this land use on the property with the condition that the development of the property will need to take into consideration the 31 parking spaces devoted to the adjoining land use and the location of the lift station on the property. As previously indicated, in 2001, the adjoining multi-tenant retail center was constructed and part of that construction, there was allow, they were allowed to build 31 parking spaces on this property, and that included the dedication of an easement to perpetuate this agreement to share parking on the adjoining property. The request as been posed is consistent with the requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance and with the condition of the rezoning request. This is the lot and how they developed it. The lift station is down here and the 31 parking spaces are right, right, right here. They end up losing a parking space or two when they do access, they get an access point into that adjoining drive, but they have, oops, but they do have sufficient parking to accommodate this land use and 32 parking spaces, the additional 32 parking spaces for the adjoining retail center. So the request is consistent with that condition that the Plan Commission forwarded to the Town Council and the Town Council approved. This is the elevations of the structure, three, three different colors, three different textures, and it's consistent with the requirements of Tier 3 of the US 36 overlay district. We do recommend that you approve this petition subject to our three standard conditions that revised plans comply with all the commitments and conditions noted as a part of any approval that's been granted on this property, that a landscape bond is required by the Unified Development Ordinance, and this bond should be provided to the Town of Avon prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the building on the subject site, and that the development shall comply with all relevant portions of the Town Code and comments by our Public Works Department, the Fire Department, and Crossroad Engineers at the pre-construction meeting. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
So this is, they're not, there's no request for waivers? And they've met all the requirements and?
Yeah, no waivers, no, no, they haven't requested any waivers. They've met all the requirements of the ordinance.
Any questions for staff? If not, we'll have the petitioner come forward.
Good evening. Dale Cruz, Cruz Consulting, 7384 Business Center Drive in Avon. And I'm here this evening on behalf of Avon Dental Center, which is Dr. LaFaye and Dr. Greer, which is currently located just east of Rural King in the Beechwood Center. And they propose to, the artist's property, they propose to build a 4,600 square foot building on the property. So just only just a little bit of detail that I might add is, so, so these parking spaces right here, this row, and this row right here, they're proposed to be future, potential future parking spaces, because we don't really need those parking spaces for today, but there's the opportunity that the, they might add another dentist to the practice, and when they do that, they'll, that'll also bring support staff with, another dentist brings more support staff and customers. And so we may need these spaces if they decide to add the, add another dentist, but we don't need those right now. And then, like Bill was saying, these are the, this is where the 31 spaces are right here. These technically are on this property, but there is an easement in place so that this property can use those parking spaces that are on this property. And we've left those basically alone. This is the lift station. That's a WCCD lift station, it just happens to be there, we wish it wasn't, but it is. So we just work around it. The, there we go. So I just wanted you to see this, this is a little better picture of the, of the building. That's the building, this is the north face of the building right here, stone and brick and ephes, there's a combination of all three, and I think I have the other side, yeah, oops. So that's, that's kind of looking from Lowe's, basically, I guess, be kind of looking from the northeast, from the northwest corner, looking to the southeast. That's looking to the northwest, that's some standing down in the southeast corner of the property, looking to the north, towards the northwest. So that's, that's the backside of the building, the south side of the building, and that's the east side that the parking lot, those parking spaces and the parking stalls nudge up to. That'll be the side that faces Dan Jones Road, and those we already saw, and then also add that, so it does have one element of two-story right here. This, this up here is a, is a break room, there's some storage space up here too, but this is a break room up here, so just be for the staff to use, but there's a break room up there, and then all the chairs and all everything else is done down here. So I think that's it actually. That's it, we'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
No waivers.
Nope, no ma'am. Not very often.
Can I, can I ask some clarifications on the parking spot? Sounds like we've got like a, two phases here, if you will. For the first phase, am I correct in what's included on our report here that there will be a total of 53 spaces available prior to the second round of parking spots being added?
Correct.
Okay.
That's this, this whole, this whole row here, this row here, the northern, the ones that face the building, and then this row here, the ones that face the building.
Okay, that gives you a total of 53?
Yes, sir.
Okay. For clarification, as you guys can see, 48 is required, so meets that initially. That was all ahead.
And this, there's two dentists going in here?
Correct.
Just have to ask, as you mentioned, it is the lift station, which is an issue or something you have to work around or?
It's not, it's not an issue, other than, other than, the only issue, if you want to even call it an issue, is their access drive is here.
Yes.
That gets to the lift station. We talked to the district about access drives, get rid of this one and allow them access through here to get down to the lift station, so this could go away, and that was not received with welcome arms, so we're not doing that.
Okay. But it's not creating a problem to have that there, it would just be preferable to have landscaping.
Right, correct.
I'm assuming that it was the reason.
That is, yeah. We're happy to say we got a sewer, we got a sewer to get to, it's very deep, it's pretty deep enough to get to.
Any further questions for the petitioner? Okay, if not, we'll take public comment on this agenda item. Anybody signed up to speak on this item, Ian? Is there anybody present who would like to speak on this agenda item? Okay, if not, public comment for this is closed. Discussion?
Just want to say one, I agree with staff with the write-up and with the recommendation, and it's nice to see a petitioner coming forward with no waiver requests, a construction that meets the ordinances. I think it's a nice development for that part of Kingston Street, finish that out, so.
It's nice to have a petitioner who read the ordinances and said yes.
Appreciate the work that they've done with staff to get this set up and the work staff did with the petitioner.
Any further discussion? Shall we entertain a motion?
Okay.
The Avon Plan Commission has considered the proposed development plan on the subject property and has found that the plan will meet all the standards of the Unified Development Ordinance under the following conditions of the approval. I move that we approve DPR 2220 Avon Dental Center Development Plan subject to the following conditions. Any revised plans must comply with all commitments and conditions noted as part of any approved, approval granted. A landscape bond is required per the Unified Development Ordinance. This bond must be provided to the Town of Avon prior to the issuance of a full certificate of occupancy for the subject site. The development shall comply with all relevant portions of Town Code and comments by Public Works, the Fire Department, and Crossroad Engineers at the pre-construction meeting.
I'll second.
Okay.
Captain Andrew.
Four.
Logan, murder.
Four.
Hillary.
Four.
Barbara, boat.
Four.
Dave, Calvin.
Four.
Nathan Pike.
Four.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next agenda item, Stanfield Crossing.
Mat P 2218 Stanfield Crossing, Request for Approval of a Major Subdivision Primary Plat, Develop Three Commercial Lots on a 4.4 acre property located near 6961 East US Highway There are no history on this particular piece of property. It's a collection of about four undeveloped lots. This right here is the location of the property, right here in red, showing you the four different lots, all of them basically undeveloped. I believe at one time there were a house or two on these properties that have been, since been demolished. As I indicated, this request is to subdivide this property, 4.48 acres, into three lots to provide for a subsequent commercial development. The property does gain direct access from US Highway 31 via private drive and then traverses through the site and exits east through an adjoining property to Avon Avenue, and there exists across this adjoining property an access easement for that purpose. The Avon Avenue access, however, will disrupt the existing stormwater draining facilities for that two-lot subdivision to the east, and that two-lot subdivision has a gasoline service station on one lot and an undeveloped lot south of the gasoline service station. While our review by Crossroad Engineers indicated that there's no significant issue with the stormwater management system proposed for this lot, there was some concern expressed at the time of review about the traversing of the existing stormwater facility on this particular property with the access point to Avon Avenue, so that it is important eventually that that positive drainage on those adjoining two lots be maintained when a design is completed for both this particular piece of property and that property across to the east. The staff does find that the The staff does find that this proposal, the subdivision proposal, meets all the standards of the Unified Development Ordinance, but we do request that subsequent approvals ensure that positive drainage be maintained along that adjoining property. This shows how the conceptual plan for the property and the layout of the three lots, the three lots are all consistent with the standards of the ordinance, both in width at street, at setback line, and lot width and lot size. This does show the access point here, coming through and connecting into this adjoining lot. This right here is a small dry pond that was intended for this two-lot subdivision here. So, this was, this is basically the concern of the staff, and we believe that they can design this little drainage facility here to accommodate the drainage for all of these properties, which is why we don't have a significant concern with the drainage plan, the preliminary drainage plan. We just want to ensure that the design of this facility here does accommodate the second, these two lots over here as well. This shows a little bit better the layout of the lots with respect to that adjoining property, and we do recommend approval of this petition, subject to four conditions, the three standard ones that we generally put on most approvals, and then condition number one there, that the final plat and/or subsequent development plans challenge sure that the stormwater infrastructure on the adjoining lot to the east be appropriately maintained. And I'd be happy to answer any questions at chat.
I don't know if it's a Bill or Dan question, just bear with me. The drainage issues, that's not an issue for us to resolve now, that's saved for later for DPR, we need to make sure during that step that drainage issues are taken care of.
Yeah, so there'll be three development plan review petitions on the site and a final plat. I am guessing what we would end up doing is, since because that drainage is going to accommodate all three of those lots, that we probably do the review of the drainage on the final plat rather than the development plans. But it's possible that they could file a development plan that incorporates that drainage into it, and we'd review it then. But yeah, the...
It's not for tonight, but it will be taken care of later.
We do, we do require a preliminary drainage plan. Crossroad Engineers reviews that preliminary drainage plan just to make sure that there are no huge red flags that come out at them. You have a subdivision plat that you've continued a couple times because Crossroad is uncomfortable with preliminary drainage plan. In this particular case, Crossroad was comfortable with the preliminary drainage plan, but they just wanted to make sure that the petitioner knew that when we review this at final drainage, we're going to also look at those two lots that are to the east, to make sure that the drainage remains positively maintained for this area.
Thanks, Bill.
I have a question just for myself. On the original, on the, it's this page that you had on the attachment, was this originally, one, two, four, this was originally four lots that have earlier been combined into one, or are we just taking four lots and turning them into three?
Yeah, you're taking those four lots and you're re-subdividing them into three lots.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're all, I believe they're, they're all meets and bounds lots.
Right.
Old meets and bounds lots, so there's no need to vacate a plat or anything like that. In this particular case, they could theoretically have just redrawn the legal description to...
Yeah, it looks like a meets and bounds configuration.
Yeah, but in this particular case, all we're doing is taking those four lots and re-subdividing into three lots.
Okay.
So, just, I want to make sure I understand the location, everything, and this is probably the best picture here. So, when the three lots here, I guess on another slide, it shows the three lots and then a common area. So, the common area, but it's the internal road for the school, that will not connect to that internal road to the school? That's not the plan?
No.
Okay.
It'll connect through, that adjoining lot has a vacant lot to the south of the gasoline service station, and there's like a little asphalt drive in that, on that lot.
That's where it connects.
And that's where it'll connect with that existing little asphalt drive that will head out to Avon Avenue.
So, common area A is not a fourth lot?
No, that's not a fourth lot, that's a common area that exists for the stormwater drainage for this lot.
Okay.
That'd be like directly across from Frostbite, that common area, yeah.
Well, behind, behind the house.
And behind the houses, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Where that road comes out, then would we be looking at in the future, like, it looks like it's going to require a right out, right in, right out? Because is that the kind of end of the divider there on Avon Avenue as it comes away from the light? Is that something that would be looked at in the future?
It could be looked at, that intersection exists currently right now. I think there's actually a cut at that point that would allow people to make a left turn. But Public Works would look at that at the final plat and see if they want to make any changes to it.
Okay.
If not, we call forth the petitioner.
My name's Jeremy, with Kaiser, with V3 Companies, 619 North Pennsylvania Street, Indianapolis, 46204. I'm here representing approval on this project. As far as the drainage goes, we kind of, at the last minute, wasn't able to get out there to get some additional field information on some of the existing infrastructure that's already there, so we could not really provide Crossroads with an update on the drainage in time for this Plan Commission meeting. We did have a Teams meeting with NDOT last week concerning the access off of 36. They didn't have a problem with it. They said it'd be about 10 years before they get down from the east to the west on 36 for their expansion. As far as Avon Avenue, there is, I think, a right and a left out of there, but NDOT suggested people just turn right, use the roundabout, it'd be way easier to, instead of making a left. So, that was one of their comments. And we're planning on having it be a bioretention system, so we will definitely provide, you know, calculations that show it incorporates the existing detention plus the proposed three lots as well. So, we'll be providing actually water quality and detention for all three lots. So, I think that's kind of really it. Does she have any questions?
Questions for the petitioner?
This may be a question, I apologize. This may have been a question for the staff, but what's the, what's the condition of the road that's out onto Avon Avenue right now? Is it a gravel, is it?
It's just asphalt.
Asphalt?
Yeah.
Okay, is that in town limits, or is that unincorporated? Inside the town, okay. So, is there, since that is, is that petitioner's property, that that road is currently going out onto Avon Avenue?
There's an ingress, egress easement all the way from the line of that lot to Avon Avenue, and then another one will continue for our drive.
Do you anticipate the need to improve or to repair, or, yeah, improve that section of road that leads into Avon Avenue with the development of this property?
I don't think that was in the plan to improve that road, but I mean, I don't think it's in terrible condition either.
Actually, and I've driven by it a million times, I can't recall if it ever went down that way. But that, my question ultimately goes to, you know, with the, eventually, there's going to be traffic going down that road. Does it need to be improved?
Right, what's the section? Sure, yeah, I understand that. Yeah, I think that was one of NDOT's comments as far as the, because there's a shoulder on 36 that we could use actually as a, as a right turn in lane, but they're trying to check and see if they've got any cores to make sure that we can use that as a turn line that has the appropriate thickness. So, we're still kind of waiting back on that. No problem.
Just to follow up on access, so there'll be one access off of 36, and that'll be used for, to access all three lots then, as it goes down to the...
Yeah.
Southern part road there?
Exactly.
Okay.
Any further questions for the...
The drive that you're proposing in the middle of here is, I see it's proposed as a private drive, is there any reason it's wanting to maintain private versus a public road?
I think just as far as the upkeep would be, you know, if it was a public road, but I think the developers would maintain it if it wasn't.
Does anyone have any comment on that, Brendan?
Brendan O'Hara, Absolute Net Properties, 2050 North Alabama Street, Indianapolis, 46202. And I think the answer to your question is, we've assumed you wanted us to have it be a private drive. I don't know if we'd make it a public drive, we'd probably have to talk to our lead tenant, which is a bank, about that, so maybe, to be determined for now?
Okay, yeah, I don't believe this matters right now. I think, I think I felt Dan's head shake no when I asked that question. I was purely curious when I saw private drive and...
Don't you hate it when the principal's in the room?
I'm sorry, say again?
I said, don't you hate it when the principal's in the room?
Not at all, not at all, Dan. That was it, thank you.
Any further questions for the petitioner? Okay, if you'd like to have a seat, we'll take public comments on this agenda item. Is there anybody who has signed up to speak on this agenda item? We do have someone, or no?
There was a Harry Austin, he signed up for M A P 2219, which... Oh, that's mine, okay, nevermind.
Is there anybody present who would like to speak on this agenda item? Nobody being present, we declare public hearing on this agenda item closed. Discussion? I live very close to there and drive past it all the time, so I do say I like the idea that something's finally happening to it, and I think this, turning it into a commercial development makes a lot of sense for that location, and it meets all the requirements of the ordinances.
This is, this is mainly administrative, not very discretionary.
Right, no waivers, great, two in a row.
Two in a row, maybe it's a pattern.
As you, as you put it as well, Catherine, it meets those standards, it's Met's staff's call, so, looks like we should move forward with it, and I'll be willing to make a motion to that effect.
There's no further discussion? Let's take a motion.
I move that we approve P D 22-18, Stanfield Crossing Commercial Primary Plat, request for approval of a commercial major subdivision primary plat to develop a commercial development containing three lots on 4.4 acres with the following conditions? Saying those words right, because I don't see it on here. Number one, final plat under subsequent development plan shall ensure that the stormwater infrastructure on the adjoining lot to the east shall be appropriately maintained. Number two, any revised plans must comply with all commitments and conditions noted as part of any approval granted. Number three, the project receives any necessary review and approval by Crossroad Engineers on behalf of the town, HCSO, and HC Drainage Board. And number four, the final plat will comply with all the relevant portions of the subdivision control ordinance and the Town Code.
I'll second.
Captain Ranzer?
Four.
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 Okay. Move on to the next agenda item, Bellwood. Thank you, gentlemen.
So, I'm going to take this one, this is MAP P 229, Bellwood, version two. This is a request for approval of a major subdivision primary plat, and that plat is utilizing the enhanced architectural standards to develop a single-family residential community containing 167 lots on 65.872 acres. Some history, I left it blank in your staff report, and then today I remembered, hey, it's V2 for a reason. There was a preliminary plat for this property under MAP P 2111 of last year, and that was using the previous zoning ordinance, and it was at that time known as Millstone. That was a plat request for 108 single-family lots, since the subdivision name was changed to Bellwood, and they actually, as far as I understand, abandoned the, that proposal during the final plat process of MAPP. So, they've, they've since redesigned using the enhanced architectural standards of our new Unified Development Ordinance, and that's what's before you today. Location is 7379 East County Road 100 South, Avon, Indiana. And there it is there, it's these two large farm fields here, east of Pine Tree Estates, south of East 100 South there. As I stated before, this is a request for primary plat approval that would subdivide 65.872 acres into 167 single-family lots. That equates to a gross density of approximately 2.5 units per acre. As I stated before, the petitioner proposes to utilize the enhanced lot standards as permitted by Article 7.27 of the UDO, and those enhanced lot standards would allow for higher density, smaller lot widths, and smaller lot areas in exchange for enhanced architectural features on the home. So, this is the proposed layout of the subdivision here. The petitioner does not propose to use the density bonus allotted in the enhanced lot standards, so the enhanced standards would allow for a density of four units per acre, but the petitioner is proposing just a density of 2.5 units an acre, that's less than the base standard, which has a maximum of three units per acre in R2. The petitioner does, however, propose to utilize the lot width and lot size bonuses, and throughout their subdivision, you'll find lots with 60-foot widths and lots with 7,200 square feet in area. Staff has reviewed the elevations and floor plans of the proposed home models and have found them to be in compliance with the enhanced architectural standards, as detailed as than the conditions of the staff's, of staff's recommendation, and it's a bit detailed, so you'll see it in the next slide. I may not say them all if that's correct, if that's okay with you, but we do recommend approval with the following conditions, that the following elevations be used on any lot, and you can see those there. Then there are some elevations that can only be used for interior and perimeter lots, perimeter lots meaning those along 100 South, and you can see those elevations models listed there. And there's one that can only be permitted on interior lots, so not on a corner and not on a perimeter lot along 100 South, that's Hampshire B. Furthermore, any revised plans shall comply with all commitments and conditions noted as part of any approval granted. The project shall receive any necessary review and approval by Crossroad Engineers on behalf of the town, HCSO, and HC Drainage Board, and the final plat shall comply with all relevant portions of the Unified Development Ordinance and the Town Code. With that, I am available for questions.
I have a few questions. So, you talk about the elevations, but we, we don't have anything in our packet that shows the elevations. So, I'm not sure the relevancy, I'm trying to understand that, because as I was going through the report, I was getting confused as I was reading the report around these elevations, some can be used some places, some can't be used in other places. We didn't have the layout of the lot or of the 65 acres there, so I don't understand, so I'd like you to explain more around the elevations themselves, if you've got any pictures that you can display, that'd be great, but why are we considering that? And is that something we ought to have now, or is that something that comes? And is that something we ought to have now or is that something that comes later? Which if it comes later.
I have them here for you. There is a decent amount of them, which I believe is why they weren't included in your packet here. But I, staff has reviewed these to find them in compliance.
So help me understand the elevations of what goes where then? Because it's like what, I'm assuming they're different designs.
Yeah.
But why can't some go in some places and some go in the others?
It all goes to table seven point two of the unified development ordinance. Within that table, it kind of lays out criteria for certain lots to meet certain placements such as perimeter lots, corner lots and interior lots. So using table seven point two of the U D O, I went through each of those and found what the elevations have the correct points and where they can be placed.
Okay. And then the part where you said like, they didn't take advantage of the enhanced standards for the elevations, but they did for lot sizes?
So the seven point two allows you to use enhanced lot standards, call them like a bonus. So if you do meet the architectural, the enhanced architectural standards, then you are allowed a greater density, a smaller lot area and a smaller lot width. They were welcome to increase their density because they did meet them on all of the houses that were proposed, but they chose not to for the density. They did however take advantage of the lot width and the lot area.
Okay, alright, I'm good, thank you.
You're very welcome.
I'm sorry, so the density stays the same, whether it is an increase in density?
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
So taking advantage of or using the enhanced.
Can you turn your microphone on?
Use the enhanced architectural standards. Are they, does that allow them to increase the density? And is that what they're doing in this case?
It would allow them to and they have met the standards in order to do that, but they are not increasing the density overall of the entire subdivision.
So is the petitioner the same petitioner that put forward a platte earlier? Earlier you shared that was one hundred and eight lots versus one sixty-seven. So is it the same petitioner?
It is, yes.
Okay. And did they provide any, an explanation as to why they went from one oh eight to one sixty-seven?
No, I'm not sure that they would need to, that since this is a mechanism of the ordinance, they are just strictly meeting the ordinance. So they're not necessarily asking you for any sort of waiver or discretionary approval. It's just a different way for them to go about meeting the ordinance. You're welcome.
So do I understand correctly that we've had three petitions here tonight that are not requesting waivers?
That's correct, yes.
This is very strange.
You must be doing something right.
Must be something in there.
To add a little bit more color, I guess, to it. So there is an increase in density, right? So they're going from one eighty to one sixty-seven. What Ian was trying to, what Ian was saying is the standard in the current ordinance is a maximum without using the enhanced architectural standards. Using the base architectural standards instead of table seven point dash one of three units an acre. So what Ian was saying is they're not taking advantage of, and if you use the enhanced architectural standards, you have to four units an acre. At two point five, they're not really utilizing that, that density bonus that they get. But they are narrowing or creating or reducing the lots. Theoretically speaking, they could have developed this in the R two district under the old ordinance, but they, they would have run into problems obviously with the, with the lot sizes. So yeah, there's, there's an increase in density, but they're still under the maximum that they were allowed if they were, this were a straight subdivision. Yeah.
Ian, could you put the lot? Slide up there that shows the lots? And their sidewalks, just looking at the report, make sure sidewalks are proposed on all the roadways.
Sidewalks throughout, five foot sidewalks throughout the entire subdivision and a ten foot multi-use path at the, along one hundred south. At the north.
Is that a boulevard entrance?
Yes, it is, night, good eye. With a ten foot center planning ship.
Any further questions for staff? Okay, we invite the petitioner to come forward.
Good evening, my name's Tony Begato with Lennar Homes of Indiana. Address is one one five 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 North Meridian Street, Suite four hundred in Carmel, Indiana. And yeah, so basically to explain, we actually got the first platte approved, which under my notes, I think I had it as about one fifteen, one sixteen homesites. But that was approved right before the new U D O was opened and approved. So we were held to eighty foot lot standard. So we came in with a platte that complied. We met all the standards and it was around one hundred and eighteen or one hundred and sixteen units, sorry. And then when we saw the new code approved and we hadn't started any construction yet and still had time with our land seller, we thought maybe we should look at if we tried to enhance the homes that we were planning on building. If we can make the smaller homesites work with the new U D O. And so with that, we went to our engineer who's here with us tonight and looked at the lot standard for the sixty foot, seventy-two foot and did figure out we could fit about fifty-one more homes. Again, it was going to be the same home, so it's a little bit of a smaller home site, but we added architectural enhancements that weren't on the standard home originally. So we do get more density out of it. And I would say probably through this exercise, I mean, we did try to get this most, as much units as we can. So two and two point five with drainage requirements and the roads and open space, that's pretty much the most we could get. If we could get to four, we would, but it would require townhomes, which I don't even remember if this zone would allow that. But so two point five is the max we were able to get to. And we provided the staff with a set of home plans and like Ian showed, I mean, there's a lot of different home plans. And the way the code reads is there's a set of standards for the front façades on all homesites. And then for the corners and then for the rears, you have to have other points. So that's why some homes may meet certain lots and not others. So for example, one of the points we would have is like a twenty-four foot deep interior garage, you get a point. But on one of our homes, I know we don't have twenty-four feet, but if it's on the rear of the property, we add the other architectural features required for the rear. And then it would comply because we put in other enhancements that met the rear requirement for the points. So, but when it's not on the rear and doesn't have those additional features, then it didn't qualify. So that's why some of these homes meet only the interior or only the exterior of the corner. So there's different, different features that were added on certain homes to meet those specific requirements. So, so like a summary, we have eight, eight twelve roof pitch, which is normally a six foot twelve. So that's a different, every home will have like a morning room, which is not standard. So that meets one of the point requirements. On the rear homes, on the perimeter road, there'll be additional landscaping and then ondulating property lines with setbacks. So the homes have variation, not all in one row. And then we put in on the corner lots, for example, all those ones will have a side entry garage. So then on the front facade, you don't see the garage door. So that's why those only work on the corner because they, they're side entry, which are not on the other interior home sites. So things like that, we put in a list together to show how they would comply. And that's why the homes are listed the way they are in the site plan in the staff report of which ones comply with which standards. But with that, we're here just for any questions. And as was stated, we comply with all the requirements and each home that would be permitted will make sure they meet those requirements for the certain lots.
So there are three drainage ponds on the property, I see?
Correct. It is basically the same layout before, just smaller lot sizes. So this, the street pattern, everything is the same as what the first version was.
Questions for the petitioner? We're not used to people coming with what they ask for, so we're a little.
Well, that's a good new U D O then.
A little flummoxed. Okay, there's no further questions for the petitioner. Have a seat and we'll take public comment. Has anybody signed up to, to speak on this particular agenda item?
Now it's time for Harry Austin.
Start with your name and your address.
My name's Harry. Seventy-eight ten Juniper Lane, Avon, four six one two three. We have, I have some questions. The number one's the drainage. Because that, I live in Pine Tree Estates, which is east of this addition that's going in. Right now it's just a big old field and the drainage runs east down into Pine Tree Estates. So there is a big swell behind all the lots. On this, you know, but anyway. How are they going to do it? Are they going to put some kind of a mound? Along a fence road of their property in Pine Tree, keep water from running? Think the water runs. And we don't want all the water dumped off on us.
Is that what you're looking for, sir?
Yes. The road on that end of it actually comes in to our addition. Our addition has a road, the road on the other side of the fence road that stops at the fence road. And the water runs east. They, it looks like they got the retention pond on the south side. So what's, how's that, what's going to keep all the water running down into Pine Tree Estates? And then that, that's a concern for everybody, everybody in our, in our neighborhood. And then the other one is the entrance, they're using the, one of their entrances are going to be off through Pine Tree Estates. Off of one hundred south. That's going to be putting a lot of traffic through our little neighborhood. And we also have an entrance, what I call the back entrance off of Dan Jones Road. And I got a feeling it looks like two thirds maybe of the houses and everything is going to be, it'd be easier for them to come through our neighborhood. And we only got sixty homes. Well, we don't need all that traffic coming through our little neighborhood off of Dan Jones and off of one hundred south and everything to get into it. And if they bring construction, construction vehicles and everything in off of one hundred south through our neighborhood, it's going to tear the streets up. I guarantee you, when they put the neighborhood in back in ninety, I think, the road was not built to handle construction company or construction equipment. It's going to tear them up. And then I think Avon actually handles, takes care of the streets in our, in our little subdivision. So that means Avon's going to have to be repairing roads. If they use our neighbors, our entrance for construction, construction vehicles and everything. So those are my two concerns and a lot of that concern to just about everybody in, in my neighborhood, we, I've talked all of them. That's all this traffic coming through. Connected, we're going to be getting a whole lot of traffic through our little subdivision. They have, they have, they're going to build an entrance, might as well stand on one hundred south. Then the other, the other entrance is going to be off the south. So I'm thinking they either need to put another entrance if they need to off of, two entrances off of one hundred south. They got one on this, on the west end, they need to put one on the east end instead of using ours. You know, they're going to put one hundred and sixty homes in there, so let them handle their own traffic. And not use, not use our little subdivision for entrance to it. I guarantee you, people that come through there that buys in there and they come like from a playing field or whatever, they're going to hit our back entrance and come all the way through our neighborhood to get to theirs.
Thank you.
So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Is anybody else signed up to speak? Is that it?
That's all I got.
Is anybody else present who would like to speak on this agenda item? If not, we'll close the public hearing for this agenda item. Would the petitioner like to respond to any of the questions that were put forth during the public hearing?
Yeah, I'll start with the road connections and then Kyle, our engineer, will talk about the drainage. So the U D O requires the connection. I mean, we wouldn't have it, we would need a waiver if we didn't have it. So from our, you know, from our standpoint, we comply with all the access requirements and no construction would go through that neighborhood. We would come in off our main entrance. And we would typically post any signs if we find that to be an issue during construction. But we don't see any reason why that architecture effort would even try to come through that area, the secondary access through that. But generally speaking, the part of the U D O require from both of the, the way that is.
Good evening, Kyle Ikorn, H W C Engineering, one thirty-five North Pennsylvania Street, Suite twenty-eight hundred Indianapolis. And one more comment on the access, I believe the U D O limits us to one access point every quarter mile on that principal county road one hundred. So we couldn't make a second connection if we wanted to. And as far as the drainage, you know, all along the perimeter will have storm structures, beehives that, you know, all the water that's draining toward that subdivision, we captured and routed to the ponds. And then we're actually proposing to take all of our drainage through the Village Eternatree storm system. And we've provided calculations that show that there's adequate capacity in that system for the storm drainage. So that's not a concern. And Crossroads provided a satisfactory review of the drainage, so.
All right. Question, any additional questions for the petitioner? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Discussion?
Well, to the, the questions that were asked. You know, on the drainage, you know, that comes up as a common topic. And then Greg's not here, but the, as the review's done, that each development is required to maintain to make sure water flow doesn't leave the property it's being developed. So that's part of what was just discussed, that sounds like the plan's been put together and been approved. So there shouldn't be any drainage. And if there is, would the developer then be responsible for addressing that if they were, it was discovered during the development time?
Aside from all the zoning, the developer has to also comply with our stormwater ordinance. And in that stormwater ordinance, the basic principle is that they cannot allow that current flow of water to increase in either capacity or volume or rate. In addition, under, I think it's mentioned earlier that typically what happens is they actually improve drainage on almost every development because that ordinance requirement. And as the gentleman said, that they, you know, they're going to capture this eastern flow here. And that, that surface water, which is captured, it's going to end up to the south in the, in the, the ponds through the measures that they take. Currently, there's, there are no measures. It's a field. The water flows where it flows and in compliance with your stormwater ordinance, it's actually manning. managed. And so in my time, I've, you know, you will always see an improvement on drainage through development, through, through an ordinance like ours. So it should be much better, both in terms of the fact that it's being managed and metered and in terms of rate of flow, volume of flow, and then some of the measure, and some of the facilities that are used also improve water quality. So it's, you know, from, to comply with our stormwater ordinance, aside from all the other ordinances, you should see that issue dealt with very, you know, it's very seriously and it's reviewed by the town engineers, submitted by engineers from the developers. So I know it's a common concern, but actually the best thing that could happen to neighbors is to have this land be developed and then the water's actually being dealt with instead of just going for what wants to go now. There could be some water on the surface that doesn't get into the inlets, but it will be, the drain, whole drainage situation will be better after development because of the requirements of your ordinance.
Thank you, Dan. And then just to the points about the connectivity, I know we promote connectivity among our neighborhoods, which is why it's part of the UDO. And I understand the, the concern there, but that's why the, the stub roads and all the developments there is to promote that connectivity through the neighborhoods and the developers just meeting the requirements of our ordinances there. And I, and I would be concerned about construction traffic being in your neighborhood. And I think that's something that if you raise that issue, would be addressed because we don't look for, I expect construction traffic to be going through an existing neighborhood. Or would, I think they would, since that kind of would be an obstructed path for them to get to the construction site. But it is something that there's. Forward, meeting our ordinances, not asking for any waivers and putting forward a plan to develop that undeveloped part of Avon.
Not a question, but I'd like to, for the gentleman's comment about the traffic, just to give you a little heads up on the planning on how they're doing this. This is split up into two phases. The first phase is the west side of the development. So the section closest to your neighborhood won't even have a road available for that construct to go through just yet. They'll be done with the west side of that development first before they begin the section that'll be near you. So there, there really won't be an opportunity for construction traffic to go through your neighborhood. That was it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay. Do we want to present the motion? Don't all jump at the opportunity at the same time.
I'll, I'll bite. All right, it's a lot here, so bear with me. I move that we approve MAPP 22-19 Bellwood V2 preliminary plat, request for approval of a major subdivision primary plat to develop a single-family residential development containing 167 lots on 65.87 acres with the following conditions. Number one, the following elevations can be used on any lot. Hampshire A Corner, Hampshire B Corner, Hampshire C Corner, Kingston A Corner, Kingston B Corner, Kingston C Corner, Valencia A Corner, Valencia B Corner, Valencia C Corner. Number two, the following elevations can be used for interior and perimeter lots only, no corner lots. Hampshire A Interior, Hampshire C Interior, Irvington A, Irvington B, Irvington C, Kingston A Interior, Kingston B Interior, Kingston C Interior, Valencia A Interior, Valencia B Interior, Valencia C Interior. Number three, the following elevation is only permitted on interior lots, no corner or perimeter lots. Hampshire B. Number four, any revised plans shall comply with all commitments and conditions noted as part of any approval granted. Number five, the project shall receive any necessary review and approval by crossroad engineers on behalf of the town, HSO, HCC Drainage Board. And number six, the final plat shall comply with all the relevant portions of the Unified Development Ordinance and Town Code.
I'll second that.
You get the easy part.
Let's take a vote. Four.
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 All right. Is there any other business that needs to be attended to?
Just a, a comment, I'm thinking, and some of my questions were because I did not have the development packet for that in my packet. So sorry to ask questions, it maybe it would have been satisfied, but I just saw that it was not in my packet. Pardon? No. I looked over and saw Mason's and I stole his to take a look at it. But I do also that this, this, because we talked about elevations and what, I don't think that was in the packet either, is how to strike a happy medium because you reference that extensively in your staff report, but nowhere did we see any elevation. So when we're trying to prove something that says this or that, there's no reference to that. So I'd, I'd like to ask staff to figure out that happy medium of whether we review it just together or give us copious amounts of paper is some way that helps us to understand what you're reviewing.
This is the second subdivision request that's come, well, this is probably the first subdivision request that's come before using the enhanced architectural standards because the other one, while it's been reviewed by the staff, hasn't come to you yet. And it's a, it, the enhanced architectural standards makes subdivision review a lot more complex. And it is a, it is a sort of a balancing act because the petitioner will submit elevate, you know, that elevations, that thick dozens of elevations and we'll go through them one at a time with the checklist and try to make sure that it complies. If we, if you all want the elevations, what I would like to do is submit them to you electronically so that we don't print off, you know, an inch of elevations to you. So we would give you the paper copies of this and we would probably follow up with an email saying, here are the elevations in the, in this subdivision that's utilizing the enhanced architectural standards so you can click through them if you want to.
Or even if we were just to see them projected here at the meeting.
Yeah, we could do that, too.
Yeah.
I would choose the former. That way it doesn't, because that could potentially drag out if we have to do all that content here. I mean, we could have it.
Available.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, it also gives you the unique experience to do that homework prior to the meeting. I like that idea better.
Yeah, it's just the more and more, I think, the more developers that, that see the ordinance and see that they can gain some lot width and lot size benefits from the ordinance, that we'll see more and more enhanced architectural standards. And we literally, the one that I reviewed probably had about 20 different elevations. I think this one had about a similar number of, amount of number, number. And, and to get the enhanced architectural standards, they basically have to submit the houses that they're going to build on the site.
Did we talk about this in a previous meeting, but that maybe to be able to eliminate paper and go to like what the town council has and get a surface or laptop or tablet so we get it electronically? Did we discuss that in a previous meeting?
We could probably do that right now because we actually put the entire packet online. The packet that you get gets put online in an electronic format. So we could just give you a link to it and you click on it and download the whole thing if you wanted to.
I think Paul's asking for us to get them tablets and I'm, I want him to back up off our budget a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, that's something, I throw that out there as a discussion maybe with the town council to see, plan for that, maybe.
You already submitted your budget for next year, right?
Yeah.
We have a, we have a staff member standing at the podium.
Yeah, just real quick, Jared Wade, Communications Director for the town of Avon. I, I want to make sure that the blame is not put on the wrong person. With our new website, there are certain formats that do not work well with the online system. And this is an error, this is an error, this is a system bug that Civic Plus is aware of and they're working on it. Unfortunately, when you get to those large format PDFs and those plans, the website just can't handle that much information that quickly. Ian had them uploaded originally and he was having some issues getting the entire packet sent out in, in a manner. And he came to me and asked me about it. And that's when I informed him that there's a specific file type. And sure enough, it was that one that he removed so that way he could get it to you. So I just want to make sure that, that he is not to blame for that. That is a situation that is more IT related and I will happily take that blame. We are also migrating over to a Microsoft 365 system for the entire town. Bill Peoples is spearheading that whole process.
He is not.
And when that process is fully processed, when that process is fully processed, we'll run with that sentence, when that's completed, we're going to be able to send packets digitally very, very simply through just an email and a link. So that will solve that problem instantaneously. But I just wanted to clarify that real quick.
I have a question for Dan. Is it possible? Probably not. But possible, because a lot of these motions tend to.
With a lot of language, thank you. Understandably so, like we want to make sure it's documented for the record. Is there a shortcut to making those motions so that we don't have to read the entire motion?
Sure. You can say, I move we approve this plat with all the conditions recommended by staff because the staff reports in writing, easy to, to connect those and, but I enjoyed listening to Robert read it.
I was going to say, you couldn't have told me that before.
We all do.
I got you, Dan. I've heard of you. Good question.
Awesome.
Yeah, and I think that's better to say, all the conditions recommended by staff, everybody knows what that is because it's in writing.
I thought I was pronouncing Valencia, you know, I was running through them, but I like this idea.
You know, what's the point of having these meetings if we, if there's someone who we can't just pick on once in a while, so? Okay, any other, any other, other business? Okay, committee reports. BCA?
We had nothing on BCA. We had nothing on BCA. We approved the next year's schedule. That was, unfortunately, that's Tuesdays.
We'll be meeting Tuesdays next year, starting in January.
Starting in January.
At 6:30. So, nice change.
Okay. Town Council? Okay. Other committees?
RDC.
RDC, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Last week, we, in addition to approving several invoices, we also had our county road 100 South update and Ivy Tech update. Greg Garrett-Taz made his annual presentation to us regards TIF districts and also the award for the Dan Jones Widening Phase One.
Any other committee reports?
Could that Bill read back?
Thank you for that. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Dan.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, if there is nothing else that needs to be discussed for the good of the order, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned.